We ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for our invocation given tonight by Councilor Chalmers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we pray. Lord, we come before you tonight and just give you thanks that we are one nation under God. We just thank you for our heritage and thank you for how you've blessed us as a nation, how you've blessed us as a state, and blessed us as a city. We thank you for the freedom that we have to come together and govern ourselves, and we understand it's a responsibility, but not only a responsibility, but a duty. And we thank you for that. Thank you for that freedom. Lord, we ask that you be with those that are not able to be with us tonight because of health issues or loss of loved ones, that you would be with them in comfort and heal in a way that only you can. We ask that you help us deliberate and to make decisions tonight in a manner that would please you, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll?
Counselor Striplin?
Here.
Counselor Wood?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Starnes?
Here.
Counselor Chalmers?
Here.
Counselor Bowles?
Here.
College Prairie City Council Tuesday, October 7, 2014, meeting to order. Character trait of the month is loyalty, using difficult times to demonstrate my commitment to those I serve. A great character trait it is. At this time, we have approval minutes from City Council Meeting and Public Hearing September 17, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And those minutes have been approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone who would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please come forth. Mayor Yever report?
Yes, sir. I'd like to share with you the state of the city tonight. Now that 2014 is behind us and our 2015 budget has been passed by this body, I'd like to ask if you move forward with the appointment of department heads on tonight's agenda, as both the budget and department heads are important to the condition of our city and continuing our positive progress. As we have promoted in the past month, Daniel Pratt established the city of Prattville 175 years ago. Would he or could he have ever thought that Prattville would be what we are today? Could not answer that. But today, I'd like to talk about the condition of our great city and our partners of Prattville. Here's some information about us. Prattville's home to approximately 35,000 people. Approximately 38 percent of our population is associated with the military. Almost 40 percent of the officers at Maxwell that reside off-base live in the preferred fountain city. And I'm proud to say that Prattville has a very healthy relationship with Maxwell Gunnar. The Maxwell connection has a significant role in Prattville's local economy. The Board of Education is the largest governmental employer in Otoga County, and International Paper is our next-largest employer in Otoga County. Working with and through the Chamber of Commerce, we have a healthy relationship with the Otoga County Commission and our small businesses. I share this information with you to say that our partnerships with governmental agencies along with small and large businesses and with numerous others are doing well. Our budget has grown and the city's role has changed since Daniel Pratt. Our role has grown, and one of the reasons is because of the many new opportunities available to us. Being centrally located in the state and just minutes from Maxwell, we offer travelers and residents choices and options to eat in Prattville, hotels in which to stay in while in Prattville, and the many shopping choices here whether it's uptown or historic downtown. Outdoor enthusiasts can be accommodated here as well, with our RTJ golf course at Capitol Hill. Recently returned, LPGA tournament, golf tournament, golf enthusiast coverage converged to watch the best women golfers in the world, with Otaga Creek literally in our backyard. Canoeers, kayakers, and nature lovers have partaken of this vital resource in large numbers than we've ever seen before. We all know how important those tourism and shopping dollars are to our economy. All of these, plus so many other reasons, are why people have decided to live in or visit our hometown. Our role has changed. Our infrastructure has changed over the last 175 years. Our city's infrastructure has evolved since Mr. Pratt laid down wooden planks on what is now known as Maple Street. We recently paved Watumpka Street, Combs Ford Road, and Sheila Boulevard, and now have multiple paving projects going on, such as Memorial Highway, Highway 82, and Sixth Street, and many to follow, such as Court Street, which was previously known as Factory Street. Paving dollars are shrinking, so we're looking for creative ways to keep the momentum of our paving projects moving forward. Recent sidewalk repair projects and new sidewalks being poured contributes to the healthy lifestyles for our citizens. We have storm drainage pipes that are being laid to increase our curb appeal and also to help reduce our operating cost. We are a mechanized, service-oriented organization. By reducing man-hours and weed-eating ditches and moving toward mechanized cutting equipment, we will make them not only more efficient, but also more effective in their roles, thus enabling them to work smarter and not harder. Our environmental works departments are becoming more and more efficient, effective, and ever-evolving in accomplishing their roles. The enterprise funds accounts are proving to be a significant game changer for these departments when you couple them with the newly-formed Public Works Department and the director's position. I'm very confident that if our environmental works departments continue to evolve and progress like they have, then they are poised for success, not only for 2015, but for the next 175 years. Our public safety departments not only protect us, but also educate us. Their calls for our citizens have increased. Their training is paying off in this community, and we're a very safe, small-town America. That comes from several things. Our fire department has many roles to ensure the safety of this city. They not only train themselves, but school children, businesses, and builders on everything from how to prevent fires to how to put out fires, and also the do's and don'ts of building by code. All of this is done in the public's interest of a safe community. The police department's training and schooling also extends to the public through school relations and cooperation with churches and other organizations. The police firearms safety class and the Fire and Police Citizens Academy are just some of their public relations tools. They reach out not only to our youth, our future leaders, but also to our seniors, our pillars of progress. Public safety in conjunction with parks and wrecks recently proved to our youth how important it is to stay active during the World Wildlife Day play event. Our Parks Recreation is doing well with improvements while planning for the future. A recent hotel room fee that is dedicated to Parks and Wrecks capital projects is enabling them to do some of this planning. That account has grown to just over $300,000 and growing for future upgrades. Prattville's utilizing our parks and our programs. We became America's favorite park in the summer of 2012, and the community loves the splash pad and our other park attractions. These items cover just a few things that we offer our citizens and our visitors. In general government, our Human Resources Department has done a great job making certain that not only do we have great benefits for our employees, but also that costs are kept down. Managing healthcare costs, benefits, and maintaining documents are just a few of the vital functions of this very important department. HR helps all of the departments with our human infrastructure. Not to be corny, but without our human resources, we simply could not provide our community the service to which our residents are accustomed. Our equipment resources have to be managed efficiently, and that is done through our city clerk's office in conjunction with our department heads. Our city clerk worked diligently with department heads to establish an asset management system this past year, working with, at that particular time, the special assignment of Public Works. But this department is also working hard to update our boards and committees with our city planner, and also to update some of our ordinances in order to reflect current practices. Downtown is doing well. Daniel Pratt would be impressed with the shopping, eateries, the curb appeal, and preservation of history recently noted with the refurbishment of the Musgrove Fountain. Our financial footprint is such that in a recent trip to New York City, Standard and Poor's upgraded us from an A-minus three years ago to our current standing at today's double-A-minus rating. One firm commented that it appeared that we're on the cutting edge when it comes to full disclosure of our financial standing, records, and debt information online. The continued reduction of debt and recent credit rating upgrade, the city stands poised to pay off another block of debt on November 1st. Working with the finance director and city council, our budgetary process is about checks and balances and not spending more than you can collect. Our department heads have become very accustomed to strategically planning for the year's business in the best interests of the respective departments and our community needs. Please be reminded that as municipality, infrastructure, and equipment need will dictate future spending habits. There is good debt and bad debt. We have shown you that we are working hard to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and we'll continue that trend. Maintaining the health of our infrastructure should never be considered bad debt. Our department head's ability to trim costs coupled with our financial health, our employees will receive a merit and cost of living increases in this coming year. Thank you, city council, for passing those items in our 2015 budget. Thank you also, councilors, for your work through council committees and your strong commitment to this community and to moving this great city forward and helping make this race possible. Economic development is a team effort. One of the roles of this municipality is to create an environment for private enterprise to flourish alongside a governmental partner. Those partners are the Board of Education, county government, the Chamber of Commerce, and city government consisting of public safety, public works, general government, and quality of life. All of these components are vital in the economic development spoke hub and wheel concept. We're able to couple all these with private enterprise, clergy, and work ethic that Daniel Pratt has instilled in this community, economic development thrives. The several economic development projects in the works at this time, and hopefully they will continue to fruition in the near future. I want to leave you with one of my favorite sayings. The perception of this city is viewed considerably through each of us in our southern hospitality. The city of Prattville's grown considerably over the last 20 years, and I believe that is good. I believe that is good because we still offer Mayberry to our residents and visitors alike. I believe this is a very good thing. I never anticipated our financial health would be this far along in just three years and eight months. No one person can do everything. It takes all of us working together to achieve greatness. Thank you to the citizens of Prattville, city employees, department heads, and the city council for your support, dedication, sacrifice, and hard work for this community. Enclosing the state of our city is outstanding, and we intend to stay this course in order to realize a prosperous future for our youth, our grandchildren to be, and yours. Thank you and look forward to a successful 2015 with all of you.
President, State of the City, Condition of the City, report. Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member have any comments for the mayor this time?
Thank you.
We want to thank you for a thorough and productive report. At this time, we have a report from the council on special committee. Counselor Striplin?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I do. The sanitation committee meeting was held Monday morning, October 6, at the Annex. All committee members were present, and we had six guests. After discussion, it was determined that a two-step implementation would cause the least amount of customer disruption as we address the needed route changes for both household garbage and yard debris. The committee reviewed the need to make changes in the household garbage pickup schedules. Approximately 800 homes will be impacted as we move to equalize the number of houses per route. Some daily routes currently have 1,400 stops, while others only have 900. At present, we're making special runs into some neighborhoods to service as few as 15 houses when a truck goes by those same houses on another weekday. We're taking a proactive approach in notifying customers impacted ahead of this mid-November implementation date. Step two involves a realignment of the yard debris pickup routes and schedules. The city's been divided into five work areas with roughly the same number of homes and businesses in each area. Each day of the week, the entire fleet of trucks and personnel will concentrate on a single area. Maximizing efforts in a focused area is expected to make neighborhood pickups and trips to the dump much more efficient and much more cost-effective. Efforts will be made in January to inform the entire city of these changes that will occur in mid-February after the holidays. Hopefully, at this time of the year, the roadside debris will be less and give the entire city an opportunity to adjust to this new schedule before the spring-long work resumes. An ordinance to help facilitate the changes in step one will be on our agenda in October 21. With these changes, the committee believes customer service to our citizens will be improved, and we believe the employee morale in this department will be boosted. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Chalmers?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
With that, we will go into our agenda. We do have a consent agenda. We have seven items on the consent agenda tonight. Number one is a resolution to declare various weed-lots to be a public nuisance and ordinate the abatement part 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Number two is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weed-lots to be a public nuisance and ordinate the abatement part 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Number three is a resolution to reappoint Leo Jamison to the Board of Zone and Adjustment. Number four is to reappoint James E. Miles to the Board of Zone and Adjustment. Number five is to reappoint Alan Moats to the Industrial Development Board. Number six is a resolution to reappoint Richard M. Dorsey to the Industrial Development Board. Number seven is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign contracts for services for community initiatives and city-county services as allocated in the FY 2014-2015 budget. Do we have a motion to place these seven items on a consent agenda?
Seven.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of putting these items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And these seven items have been placed on a consent agenda. Now, do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Send me.
We have a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on any of these items? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and the consent agenda is adopted. We move into our regular agenda. Item number one is a resolution to appoint department heads. Counselor Striplin, will you read that for me, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the department heads of the city of Prattville were appointed through the period of September 30, 2013, or until their successors are duly qualified and appointed in Resolution Book 2013, page 008. And whereas the fire chief and police chief were appointed through the period of September 30, 2014, or until their successors are duly qualified and appointed in Resolution Book 2014, page 045. And whereas the City of Prattville Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Section 2-91, naming the appointed positions for the city of Prattville, was amended in Ordinance Book 2014, page 22, on July 1, 2014. And whereas the Public Works Director was appointed in Resolution Book 2014-A, page 103. And whereas, it is time for the city council to reconsider these appointments. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville, that the following individuals are hereby appointed as head of the department, appearing opposite their names until September 30, 2015, or until their successors are duly qualified and appointed. The department, Jerry Brown, Jerry D. Brown, pay grade 107-06. Police, Mark C. Thompson, pay grade 208-03. Parks and Recreation, Kelly Cook, pay grade 411-03. Public Works, Randall Lucas, pay grade 314-12. Be it further resolved that the salaries for said positions are approved in accordance with the pay plans adopted by the city of Prattville Council. Be it further resolved that the following are hereafter designated as merit positions in the Public Works Division: Superintendent of Facilities Maintenance, Superintendent of Sanitation, Superintendent of Urban Management, Superintendent of Vehicle Maintenance, and Superintendent of Wastewater. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number two is a resolution to release funds for the purchase of one 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe PPV and one Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive SSV from Dahue Chevrolet through state contract T191L for the fire department at a cost not to exceed $59,919.20. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need of one 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe PPV and one Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive SSV in the fire department. And as whereas, the 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe PPV is available through T191L contract number 4012863, line number 00006, from Dahue Chevrolet, I couldn't read it, sorry, at the cost of And whereas, the 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive SSV is available through contract number 412863, line number 0007, from Dahue Chevrolet, at the cost of $31,200-329.60. And whereas these vehicles are budgeted for the fire department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed $59,919.20 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Dahue Chevrolet LLC, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2015 budget line item fire department capital outlay. So move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted also. Item number three is a resolution to release funds for the purchase of one Kenworth T370 with Pac-Mac KBF-222 knuckle boom loader from National Auto Fleet Group through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract number 102811-NAF for the sanitation department at a cost not to exceed $163,383. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one Kenworth T370 with Pac-Mac KBF-222 knuckle boom loader in the sanitation department. And whereas said equipment is available through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract number 102811-NAF from National Auto Fleet Group at a cost not to exceed $163,383. And whereas said knuckle boom loader is a budgeted expense for the sanitation department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $163,383 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to National Auto Fleet Group, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2015 budget line item sanitation enterprise fund capital outlay. So move, Mr. President.
Alan Moats on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number four is a resolution to authorize the mayor to submit a notice of intent to obtain a MS-IV NPDES permit to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville operates a small municipal separate storm sewer system, MS-IV, as defined by the Federal Clean Water Act, and whereas the federal 2010 Census of Population designated the city of Prattville as a part of the Montgomery urban area, and whereas the Clean Water Act states that small urban MS-IVs must obtain a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, MPDES permit, and whereas the Alabama Department of Environmental Management has notified the city of Prattville that MPDES coverage is required and established a process for permit review and approval. And whereas city staff has prepared a notice of intent identifying the city's MS-IV and outlining how the city shall satisfy the six minimum control measures required by the Clean Water Act. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize and direct the mayor to submit the prepared notice of intent to obtain an MS-IV NPDES permit to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number five is an ordinance to amend the City of Prattville Code, Chapter 105, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, in General, Section 104-2. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville that the City Code, Chapter 105, Building and Building Regulations, Article 1, in General, Section 105-2, is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 105-2, Building Officials. The proposed of this chapter shall be enforced by the city fire department, building divisions and codes, and standards divisions. The director of the building divisions, as appointed by the mayor, shall be the building official. The fire marshal, as appointed by mayor, shall be the deputy building official. The building official may delegate the responsibilities of additional deputies and inspectors as may be needed to be enforced the provisions of this chapter. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage. So move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is an ordinance of permanent nature. The rules must be suspended in order for it to be considered tonight. We have a motion to suspend.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. The rules have now been suspended on this ordinance. Will there be any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. Item number six is an ordinance also to amend City Code, Chapter 101, General and Administrative Provisions, Article 3, Planning and Development Department, Section 101-57 through 101-61. Let's make it out. We just do the heading on this properly. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. To amend City Code, Chapter 101, General Administrative Provisions, Article 3, Planning and Development Department, Sections 101-57 through 101-61. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being an ordinance also, the rules must be suspended. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Rules have been suspended. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Will there be any further discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption of this item, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. At this time, we have comments from persons present. Do want to acknowledge former councilmember Mike Reniger.
... Set you at ease. I'm not here to criticize you or to complain about anything tonight. Figure you got enough folks willing to do that for you anyway. What I do come before you tonight is to compliment you, to commend you, and to praise you for some of the decisions that you made in this first half of this quadrennium. The city's involvement with the Miracle Field Development in conjunction with the YMCA was a wonderful decision. This will serve a vital need for very special citizens in our community, as projects like this clearly define the city of Prattville as a city of good character. The musical venue that y'all decided to support downtown this summer was a great tourism effort and a wonderful way to bring people downtown. I have had the privilege of playing golf at RTJ with a number of out-of-town visitors. They frequently ask me what there is to do in Prattville in the evening. I was pleased to recommend that they come downtown to the musical venue, and the response from these people has been very positive. They enjoy the warmth of the people and the entertainment, and they also enjoyed learning about the history of our community. Thank you for bringing back the LPGA. This is the first of three years from what I understand. This is a wonderful economic development opportunity, and it puts Prattville back on the world stage. You're to be commended and praised for your cooperation with the Otoga County Commission and the Otoga County School Board to retain and develop businesses in Otoga County. I refer to the Long Lewis Ford Project, and after talking to Counselor Brown, I am delighted to hear that you have a clause in that contract with them that is performance-based. They're not rewarded until they produce. You're to be commended on continuing to reduce the city's debt by increasing the reserves and improving the infrastructure to prepare for the future commercial and residential growth. Thanks for paving Sheila Boulevard. You're to be commended on continuing to reduce the city's debt by increasing the reserves and improving the infrastructure to prepare for the future commercial and residential growth. Thanks for paving Sheila Boulevard. As one who drives that every day, it got kind of difficult dodging chuck holes and dips and flaws in the road, and now it's a smooth ride, and we do appreciate that. I like to commend the employees of the city of Prattville. Without them, we just couldn't function, and they're to be commended for their fidelity to duty to the citizens. In conclusion, let me, let me encourage you to keep up the good works, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renega. Does anyone have any question or comment for Mr. Renega before he leaves? Thank you, sir. Anyone else? With that being said, mayor, you have any closing comments?
Well, I guess all I can do is sort of echo what Mr. Renega said. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank the employees, and I know some of the recent changes in the budget, everything from the merit and the cola raises to the little changes in the holiday there have been so much appreciated, and I think will make Prattville the city municipality function and be more productive, so I certainly appreciate that, and as I mentioned earlier, your work and the employees' work also. Thank you.
Councilor Striplin?
No, sir.
Councilor Brown?
No, sir.
Councilor Starres?
No, sir.
Councilor Chambers?
No, sir.
Councilor Bowles?
Yes, sir. As you can see, I'm wearing a, I'm gonna stand up real quick, a beautiful shirt from the fire department. I want to challenge everybody up here, the council members, the soon-to-be senators, all the department heads. Anybody in the building to please buy one? They cost how much, chief?
Twelve dollars.
Okay, so they were at twenty-two dollars a shirt. They're gonna be on sale tomorrow for twelve dollars a shirt. If you buy five or more, the chief will take his picture with you and put it on Facebook. I encourage everybody to buy five or more shirts so you have your picture with the chief. That's a special deal for tomorrow only, twelve dollars. This deal will not last long, so please call in tomorrow and buy your shirts. Wear them next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bowles, for that advertisement. Appreciate it. Councilor Boone?
No, sir.
Again, let me thank all of you all for coming tonight. As always, thank all city employees, all city employees for what you do. We thank the citizens who are very important for their support of what we are trying to do and for trusting us and buying Prattville. Mayor, we do thank you for the state of the city. It sounds encouraging. I would only say to you and to Mr. Mosley, our finance director, I've noticed that there are some other cities who are laying people off. So with that, I challenge you and as well as the council members to also to stay on top of what we're doing. Make sure that we don't get to this point. We need to watch the trend in taxes. Example of that, we had a drop in September sales taxes, I believe, Mr. Mosley. Is that correct? And I'm sure that's not going to continue. We hope it doesn't. But I encourage you all to stay on top of it, to make sure that we can fulfill the budget and all obligations and not have something to come up at the last minute because we are being diligent and staying on top of it at the same time. Thank you, councilmembers, for what you do, which you're committed to. Thank you all. With that being said, next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-first, twenty-fourteen, at six p.m. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.